Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. First on the agenda, need a motion to approve the bill for $312.40 to the Community Advocate for legal notices.
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to the first item on our agenda. This is to hear the appeal of Richard Ricker, 11 Maple Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass., for two variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section six, seven, excuse me, table two, to construct a building 35 feet from the rear yard setback where 50 feet is required and 17 feet from the side yard setback where 50 feet is required upon the property located at 703-715 Hartford Turnpike in the Limited Industrial Zoning District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 42, Plot 022000. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. This is actually the appeal of Michael Fashin, the manager of MFJF LLC, for the property at 715 Hartford Turnpike. My name is Richard Ricker, for the record. I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue. And I'm here with Michael Fashin to my right, and I'm also here with James Tetrow, who's our engineer, who's standing next to the plan. This is, I would suggest to you, a classic form of variance wherein we're asking for sideline and rear yard setbacks, really based on the fact that in the middle of this parcel and stretching out from the middle is a nice knob of granite and ledge that has prohibited us from locating any septic or infiltration systems for water, stormwater or anything like that. So we've had to put the stormwater off to the side up in the upper section of that plan where James is pointing out, and the septic system is in the middle. That's the only place on this lot that would support a septic system. So that's the reason I would suggest to you respectfully, that is the hardship that we're looking at. This is, I would suggest to you, not unusual for that section of town. However, I also don't think that it derogates from the, and I suggest to you respectfully, doesn't derogate from the provisions of the bylaw. And as much as we are in a commercial zone here, we're surrounded by commercial, there are no residences around us. This will not impede anyone or impact anyone around us. The simple fact is that it's a commercial use, properly zoned, properly located, it's just that we needed to adjust it. There's still sufficient setbacks to allow the fire department to get around the building as necessary. The, I would suggest there isn't any detriment by this request to anyone, no neighbors, nor to the public, nor is there any nuisance value whatsoever to this request. And with that, perhaps James might have a couple of comments, but after that, we'd be happy to answer whatever questions we can.
Sure. Again, James Tetrow from Asmit Land Design, just to piggyback on what Attorney Ricker says, just a couple of quick points. There's a commercial site here, which, all of which is above elevation 542, whereas the building where we're proposing to get a little closer to the sideline here is down around 526. This whole site on the north and west side of its property is that giant new warehouse, was it Centec Park North?
Correct.
Which was recently constructed. That's the abutter to whom we be, we're proposing to be within 35 feet of the back line instead of 50 feet. There are no, I can term sometimes sensitive receptors around this property. And just quickly, so if you're wondering, well, gee, are you trying to overdo it, then that's why you need this space. We're actually providing a third more open space than is required. The, and the lot coverage percentage is actually only a fifth of what is allowed on this property. So we're not, the applicant is not being piggish or greedy or whatever in asking for this building. We're simply limited by, we went out and did official soil testing, and some of the sort of little knobs you can almost pick out from the topography do happen to be rock outcrops. And we're just dealing with the position of those. And the, again, relatively modest-sized building the applicant's proposing is leading us to ask, to request of the board these two variances.
And that's it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Ms. O'Neil, anything to add?
I think the only question that was raised was about parking.
And we will put parking on the plan for you. There will be about 10 parking spaces, which does not reach the threshold for the planning board. So that's why the application was checked off incorrectly at first, but corrected to reflect that there will be no planning board review necessary for this plan. But we're happy to show the parking on the final plan. If the board feels that they want to condition it based on us filing a plan with the board showing parking, that's fine with us.
Yeah, that was the only thing, to show, you know, whether later or now, you know, within the final.
It's gonna need it for the building permit anyway, so.
Fair. Okay. Let's go around the room, see what the board members think. Peter, questions?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think this is sort of a textbook case for soil conditions necessitating a variance. If you've got, the only place where you can park is right smack in the middle of the lot, it is what it is. So I don't have any problems with it.
Everywhere else, we're hammering or blasting.
Yeah, so.
Ann?
Agreed.
Kevin?
No, I don't have anything further to add. Thank you for taking into consideration the fire department and being able to get around these large structures. That's appreciated from my spot. And not having to blast is certainly less of a nuisance to the town, which is great, so.
And to the fire department.
And to the fire department. So thank you.
David?
I have nothing to add.
I just was cur, what kind of business? Just curious.
Dumpster divers, dumpster rental business.
They're down on the intersection where Flynn's truck stop is now. They're kitty-corner to that.
Great. Wonderful. Local, good local business.
And he does a lot of the recycling for the town of Shrewsbury as well.
Great. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. It's a silent group of people, so I'm gonna take that as a no. Can I get a motion to close a public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve two variances under section 7B, table two, to construct a building 35 feet from the rear yard setback where 50 feet is required and 17 feet from the side yard where 50 feet is required at 703 to 715 Hartford Turnpike, Limited Industrial District.
Can I get a second?
Condition, the parking condition.
Oh.
I think the section seven, section 7D is the off-street parking and loading areas.
Right, right, right. I don't have that here, I'm afraid. Does anybody else have it?
I don't think it's written down, so.
Oh, okay. That makes it challenging for me. So what is, what do I have to add to it?
Subject to a condition that the applicant file a plan showing adequate parking.
Okay. Subject to the condition where the applicant file a plan showing adequate parking.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you, Richard.
Good change.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next, 6:30 hearing. This is a continuation from our meeting of October 30th. We do have a member who was not available at that meeting, who needs to mullin in, meaning that they have recorded, they've certified that they've listened to and watched the meeting so that they have informed information and can sit in on the continuation. Thank you, Peter. All right. Given that this is a continuation, this is for 11 Fifth Ave., resident B2 Nancy Castle, two variances, section seven, table two, to allow two sheds to remain on her property line. Can I ask the applicant to please step forward?
And then Mary Beth, I think I'll just have you sign.
Mullins.
Thank you.
The Mullins, and then I'll ask Nancy to sign as well.
Nancy, before you sit down, could you please come up and sign the Mullins for us?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Nancy Castle.
Great.
Edward Armstrong.
Hello? Welcome back.
Thank you.
So we heard from you last month, and we agreed to continue based on some further information that we felt we needed to hear from the town, but also wanted to hear if in the last 30 days anything has changed on, anything more to add to what you've already presented at your last hearing?
So I did post, I did put up some more information. I had proposed a couple of additional, you know, other, alternate locations for the sheds that would put them up against my house. There's not really a whole lot of other places to put them. If I move them further down towards the backyard, then they impinge on trees that are there that provide privacy between the two houses.
Ms. O'Neil? Anything to add?
No, I think just from the last meeting, the board had questions on whether it was a temporary or permanent structure, but to go back, there is a violation letter from, you know, the Building Inspector's Office, and that right there, they wouldn't have issued a violation letter if it wasn't thought to be a permanent structure. And I think the intent is for it to be a permanent structure. Structures, and a temporary structure technically would have to be moved or removed every 180 days, so.
Okay. All right. Can we start with the board members? Questions, comments?
Sure. I would say that of the proposed alternate locations, I think either of them, particularly the better one, would be better than placing against the fence. I think one of the issues for a variance is that there has to be something about the shape, soil, or topography of the lot that is unique in the area, that sets it apart and requires a variance. The problem with saying it's a narrow lot is all these lots are narrow along here. And so everybody has basically the same problem, where do they put outdoor storage? And so I think in terms of trying to stay with the spirit of the bylaw, it would, I'd rather err on the side of putting the storage close to the house than close to the property line, just as if you're gonna find sort of a middle ground somewhere. I would feel more comfortable with that than approving them being along the fence line.
Okay. Ann?
Just wanted to go back to our conversation the last time, and I know there was a question about whether these sheds could be placed up against the house. I don't remember whether we had a resolution.
They are supposed to be 10 feet from dwelling unit.
Oh. So that doesn't work, then?
Right. Yeah, so I guess that's what I, what I'm wondering about, and whether, is there anywhere that could comply with this?
There really is.
Is that the building code? Is that the building code that requires that?
It's zoning bylaw, too.
Yeah. And the zoning bylaw.
And I think the fact that they're sort of dismantlable is what throws me off there, because it feels like something more like a cabinet than like a permanent structure.
Right, that's where we were getting hung up.
Right, right.
But unless you move it every 180 days, it's a permanent structure.
Yeah. How much do I have to move it?
Well, the bylaws say they have to be 10 feet off the side.
Okay.
Which you don't have. You have nine, seven. Ann, sorry.
That's just what I'm thinking about right now. I guess we can go move along to Kevin.
Kevin?
No, I'd echo what's been said before. It's a tight lot. There's really not much you can do with it. And I know we hear variances all the time on setbacks and everything, but I feel like with how tight this lot is, it's difficult to justify a move anywhere on the property. I'd say put it in the back closer to the water, but that's where all your R and R is and anything you have for the lake. So it's tough to put anything back there, but to me, that's really the only place that you could put it, unfortunately.
But the problem with that is I need it for the snow blower.
Yeah.
Because I just, it's not workable to put it in and out of the garage. I did it for, what, a year and a half, two years, and injured myself one time, and, you know, just because of the twisting motion of having to pick it up to put it behind the car. It's not like an easy roll or anything. It's, it just can't. So, and the same thing happens in the back of the garage. When I put it to the back of the garage, I had the same issue.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have anything more than what I've said, so I'll turn it over to you, David.
I agree with Peter in the sense that I like it up against, I like these sheds up against the house rather than up against the property line or the fence. And I would venture a guess that the zoning bylaw, the spirit of why there's a shed setback from the dwelling unit is that way you're not doing an ad hoc extension on your home. And since these are obviously not gonna be part of the home, they're gonna be, you know, storage units for, like you said, really your recreational stuff, your pool stuff, your snow blower. In that sense, to me, it's no different than if you just stuck the snow blower out there underneath a tarp next to your house, which I don't think there's anything in the bylaws against that. So I'm kind of at, at a point where that's okay by me.
Or built an addition on the house that was attached to the house that was just to hold a snow blower. Do you know what I mean? I think that's the thing that I run into a difficulty with, is I don't think it's unique such that it would be unfair. Everybody has similar problems to this on narrow lots. But if we were going to grant a variance, I'd be more comfortable with it being that it's too close to the house but further from the fence than the other way around in terms of the spirit of the bylaw.
Agreed. That's all I have.
Anybody else, before we turn on the public comments?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? Sir? You could state your name for the record, please?
Sure.
And address?
I'm Brian Burgow, and this is my wife, Anna. She couldn't make it last time.
Anna Burgow. Hi there. Your address, please?
9 Fifth Ave., with the Butters.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One, the houses, we actually have the same, actually, our garage is smaller than theirs. We also have a snow blower. It is far more convenient to have it right in front of your garage door. Two feet of snow outside, you open the garage door, start snow blowing. I can't imagine why I'd wanna walk 10, 20 feet to a shed to take out a snow blower. So that'd be the first thing. It just doesn't make any logical sense. Second is, is that when I talked to the building inspector, this is a fire issue, fire safety. We just had a fire a week after, three doors down from us. Every one of these fires are out of ignorance of fire safety. You know, they're not intentional, nobody lit them. They just didn't realize their accelerants, they leave things in sheds. So for us, it's a case of safety, really. That's our number one thing. Is aesthetically, is it, it's not pleasant to look at? You know, we just had Thanksgiving dinner this year at our house. The shed's right outside the window. I can literally reach out and touch it. It's one thing to kind of look at the other house, because there's no windows, we can't see into their, their house, they can't see into our, but to look at the shed, sure, aesthetically. But that's not the main reason, it's safety. So as I think of it, you know, the snow blower is not an excuse, besides the fact, you know, Ms. Castle has a place in Florida, she was there all last winter, so, you know, it's not like Ed's the guy that does the snow blowing. So, you know, to us, it's, it's a, it's a luxury. It's not a necessity. There's no hardship here. My wife, Anna, works for Habitat for Humanity. They're building two houses down on Suddenland. Those people are hardship case. There's a woman with four kids, needs a place to live, right? That's hardship. For us, it's really about that we at least, you know, when I looked up the bylaws, it's 10 feet. As it turns out, in 2015, there was a variance allowed, because it's supposed to be 10 feet from the, from the foundation, but that was allowed to be four and a half feet. So now you've cut that more than in half, and then you're putting a shed right on the other side of it. It's just, it's just too close for safety. I don't know if there's anything more I need to say, or you want to say anything. That's our main reason. And as long as it's 10 feet from the fence, which I didn't really see any other place it could go. I mean, and we don't have a shed, and we got all the same toys, we got all the, we got a snow blower. Like I said, our garage is 10 feet, 10 square feet smaller. We just move the car to the right, put the snow blower out in the winter. In the summer, we push it to the front of the car. It's not hard. Right? Well, I wouldn't think of lifting my snow blower, and she wouldn't either. But, so, that's, that's the, the only comment I'd make, is that it's important to be understood that that's our concern. You know, we travel, we have security cameras now, and, you know, I was in Singapore last week, and to see on my security camera if that was ever a fire and no one's around, you know, that would be our concern. When that fire happened, I happened to be home that day, and I can tell you, I looked out the window and there's smoke going down the street. It's the third time in three years. So this fire safety hazard is a number one issue. And thank you for supporting that, because that's, when I looked up, you know, the reason what the board is, it's to promote and prevent, you know, hazardous fire safety. There's also property values, there's also our property, you know, sensibility even aesthetically. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard on the matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No moved? Okay. How would the board like to proceed?
I'm interested to hear what everybody else thinks. I think in my mind, we, along the lake, I think we routinely, and in a very practical way, we realize that these lots are irregular, they're narrow, and that sticking to the stringencies of the bylaws don't always make sense. However, I think that's usually in the circumstance where someone is building out the house a little bit, or, you know, building out a deck or something like that, and you just couldn't do it without getting too close to the line. Here, we're starting at the line and going closer to the house, and that feels backwards to me. So I think if, if I were to support anything, I'd be more inclined to support a variance for the sheds being too close to the house than to be too close to the fence line and the property line, for the safety reasons and for other things, but, you know, interested to hear what others think.
Ann?
I agree with Peter. I guess I'd rather see them closer to the house than closer to the lot line. I don't want to create a building code violation.
Right.
But that's maybe outside of our purview.
No, and that's kind of where I'm at, that it's been brought to us as a building code violation. I don't enjoy pushing a shed up against the house for fire safety reasons, as well as it already being two tight lots to begin with. I don't think there's any good solution here. Unfortunately, I think the best solution is for them not to be there. Again, that's not to say that you can't store stuff outside, there's nothing in the bylaw. I don't think there's much in the bylaws against yard equipment being stored outside, not that that's a great solution. But unfortunately, the way I'm looking at it is that the snow blower is a luxury item. My house is currently small, I have a small house, I have a small garage, I actually use my garage for my snow blower instead of my car, but that's a luxury choice I've decided to make, so that's kind of where I stand.
Fair. David?
I agree, as Peter said about, I would prefer them against the house as opposed to against the fence, but we're kind of in a tough situation, as Kevin said. So, yeah, beyond that, I don't really have anything else to add.
Are we allowing further comment from the applicant?
No, it's closed.
It's closed hearing? So we do have to consider what our options are?
I think if the proposal in front of us was to add on, you know, a few feet to the house for storage, I'd, I'd say, yeah, that's the kind of thing we do all the time along the lake. And so I don't see this as being that different, although I echo Ann's concern about, are we then, you know, going outside of our jurisdiction a little bit, maybe creating, or at least permitting a fire code violation?
Is there a comment?
There's just a question. Ms. Sheehan is here, so I didn't know if that her comment is allowed now, that it's closed?
I think it is, because you're.
She's building inspector.
Yeah, we're, yep. Ms. Sheehan, would you care to comment?
So I'm Patty Sheehan, the building inspector. Sorry, I was in doing some other work and thought I would just come down to the, come down to the meeting to just provide some guidance if I can. So the alternate plot plan that has been added with the sheds against the house is a different section of the bylaw. So the sheds have to be 10 feet away from the principal dwelling, and that is not the request of the applicant right now.
Right.
So I just want to give you that guidance, and also putting them against the house is the same issue about separation as it is against the property line, against, within a butter. So I'll just leave you with that unless you had any questions for me.
That's helpful, and I had not thought about the fact that that wasn't what the original application is for, and so I don't even know if we can consider it, actually.
No, we can't.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel much like my colleagues, it's, you know, this is a tough thing. We understand what you're trying to do and what you're trying to accomplish, and just the nature of that lot is, you know, is so tight that it's really gonna be hard for us to come up with a creative solution. Yeah. To make it conform with the bylaws, and really, I'm inclined to deny, based on all the information that we have, so.
May I comment on that?
It's a closed hearing, so no comments.
But I, I would say that I, I would consider the alternate plans, but I don't think that we're allowed to consider them, because it hasn't been noticed and that's not what was in the application.
Correct.
So it's not to say that if you were denied, you couldn't come back with something different. I don't know if there's a waiting period or anything like that, but, so, it's a tricky situation.
All right, well, can I entertain a motion? Are we all on the same page? Are we gonna?
I think so.
Okay. Motion? Anybody?
I would make a motion that the petition regarding 11 Fifth Avenue, which is located in a residence B2 zone, the petition to allow two variances to section seven, table two, to allow two sheds to remain on her property line, that that petition be denied.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next hearing. This is a continued hearing from October 30th as well. This is to hear the appeal of 16 Formington Drive, located in the Royal B District, Kapel Langer, looking to seek a variance, section seven, table two, I'm sorry, section seven B, table two, to build a farmer's porch on the front of their homes 44 and 9 tenths feet from the front yard setback. Can the applicant please step forward? Have a seat.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Madam Chairman, thank you for hearing us and the members of the board. My name is Kapel Langer. I am the owner and the resident, and so I'm here with my wife, Rocky Langer, she's also the owner and the resident. First of all, I'd start by apologizing for not being here. Last time around, there was some confusion, and there was some family events that took me away, and I couldn't come, so I really apologize for that. I want to thank Louise, Patty, and Alexander for guiding me through this process. This is my first time here in front of you guys, I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous.
But I'm glad that I get you guys to hear me out. The, we've been in the property since 2010, and we enjoy the town, and we love the place, and my family has grown since then. We were the smallest house in the neighborhood when we purchased that place, and since then, my family needs of space have increased. I have a 13-year-old, and I have a nine-year-old, and you can imagine that their skates, their bikes, their electric scooters, all the stuff is just scattered all over the garage, and I try to keep it to the side, and every time, they use it, it's scattered again. try to keep it to the side, and every time they use it, it's scattered again. The challenge that I'm facing with my garage is, um, the, the foundation is about three and a half on one side and five feet on the other side. So, these are concrete walls, and even though the door span is seventeen feet, which is sixteen to seventeen feet is traditional for a two-car garage, the concrete walls inside, um, are only eighteen feet wide, which is less than what a two-car garage needs. So, for me to have the two cars and all the kit stuff inside the garage is, um, very, uh, difficult. Um, either I ended up denting my cars or I end up with, you know, kids, kid stuff coming underneath the cars. So, uh, I really need a place, uh, that is, is not a shed because the properties over there don't have sheds, but they do have a farmer's porch. A lot of different properties have them, so it's not going to be an eyesore in the society. Um, a lot of folks have, uh, used that space because my house is east-facing, um, to, uh, enjoy the summer outside. Um, and there is no necessarily, um, harm to the society or the look and feel to my neighbors because the property, which is right above the slope, the property is on a slope, uh, the property that's above the slope is about twelve to fourteen feet higher than where I am, and the property that's below the slope next to me, uh, has a, a private drive going through, and they're about fifty feet away, and they're also down slope from me about twelve to fourteen feet. So, uh, I had, had I known, I would have designed differently, but I had it designed, and then I had the, uh, gas line moved through, uh, you know, dig safe. Uh, I got that evaluation done, so there's going to be no impact to the utilities. The gas meter has already moved to the side of the house from the front of the house, and I spent a considerable amount of money prepping for this project. It is going to be a financial hardship for me to go back and redesign the whole space. Uh, it is going to be hard for me to, uh, uh, even if I redesign it and just do a six feet or maybe a four and a half feet, which, which, or five feet, which I'm allowed, uh, it will end up with very small of a, a farmer's porch, which should defeat the whole purpose of making a farmer's porch for the space that I need. I want to throw all the kid stuff, bikes, roller blades or whatever in that farmer's porch in a box and, um, try to work with a garage space that I'm given with because it's not financially viable for me to expand the foundation that lines up along the garage. So, I strongly urge you guys to allow me to, um, make this farmer's porch, which, um, I should be fifty feet away from the property line. Uh, I'll end up being forty-four feet and forty-four point nine feet away from the line. So, I'm asking for an allowance for a few feet so that I can do this and continue to enjoy my property with my family and my kids, who, by the way, don't put anything back in this.
We can't solve that problem. Sorry.
I totally understand that.
Beyond our purview.
We appreciate you guys having, uh, to consider this, and, uh, I really would like to know if you have any questions for me that I can answer.
Certainly. Thank you. Ms. O'Neil, any additional information? Okay. Let's go through the board and see what questions, comments we might have. Peter?
Sure. Um, so one question. Am I interpreting the, the plans correctly that the porch isn't going to be enclosed?
It's not going to be enclosed. It's going to be open.
Right. So, I think, you know, in the past, I believe we've looked at things like porches that are open in a slightly different light, um, than enclosed additions or even three-season rooms. Um, I think one of the criteria that we are allowed to consider for variance is the, the position of existing structures. The house is where it is. The front of the house is where it is. Farmer's porches go on fronts of houses. You can't put a, a farmer's porch on, you know, the front of the house is where the front of the house is, and that's where a farmer's porch goes. So, if we're talking about five feet, um, and an open farmer's porch, and you have the condition of the existing house, there's maybe an argument there for a variance. I think the issue is that typically, and this came up in the last, um, hearing, that the, the thing that gives you the hardship is supposed to be something that's unique. I'm not sure that that's unique in the neighborhood, that whether your house is closer or not to the street than any other house, or whether there's anything about the topography of the street or of, of your lot that, that makes this a, a unique condition. And so, on that basis, I'd be interested to hear what, what other folks think in terms of whether it, it sort of meets the criteria or not, but, um, I think there is a path there, but I'm interested to hear what other board members think.
Ann?
So, I think it's not a significant variance request. He's asking for five, five feet, three inches, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Um, you know, it's set really far back from the road, from what I can tell. Um, I think there is a hardship in that the house is located, it located where it is on the lot.
Right.
There is some topography there. Um, so, although it's maybe a minimal hardship, I, I, I would tend to find that there is some hardship.
Given the ask, it's like hardship doesn't have to be, um, huge if the ask is small, I think.
Yeah. All right, Kevin?
I mean, I, I see where you're coming from, Peter. I'm not, I'm not inclined to think it's, um, too big of an ask before us, um, and it certainly wouldn't be the first on the street, just taking a look at, um.
At yours down.
One or every three homes has.
Yeah, so it certainly fits in with the characteristics of the neighborhood as well. Um, and I'm all for improving, um, upon your home, and if this is the choice you've decided to make, then, um, I'm willing to accept, um, five, five feet, three inches for, uh, a farmer's porch.
David?
Yeah, I think the, the hardship is proportional to the request, uh, as Ann said, and so, um, and, and as others have said, I think that the, the aesthetic and the theme is consistent with the neighborhood and, um, should only enrich in it and not really detract from it. Um, so, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
I would agree. The topography also is a challenge in that neighborhood, so I think that we could hang our hat on topography. Um, and I don't think it derogates from the intention of the bylaws.
No.
It keeps within the neighborhood, so to me, it, it is, um, a fair ask. That's my thoughts.
Yeah.
And I would just note that there were some waiver requests.
Tell us about that.
So, um, you guys can discuss amongst, but there was a few, um, under Articles three, Section three of the ZBA Rules and Regs, um, things within the site plan that are required. Um, on, you know, he provided a very good plot plan for what you were doing, which satisfies, you know, I think the board, but things like, um, the names and addresses of the abutters, um, property lines and locations of buildings on abutting properties, um, were missing, which don't necessarily, you know, aren't necessarily needed, um, for this. So, I think, um, if that, you know, is okay with the board, then you can move, you know, to approve those waivers.
In other words, the information that's missing isn't particularly relevant to this case?
Correct.
Okay.
Are we, um, or is a waiver a second vote, or do we wrap that into the decision?
That is wrapped in the decision.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Within the findings.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Silence. So, can I get, um, a motion to close public hearing, please?
Move to close the hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, can I get a motion, please?
So, I move to approve, um, a variance under Section, oops, seven B, Table two, to build a farmer's porch on the front of a home forty-four and nine tenths feet from the front yard setback at 16 Farmington Drive in the Royal B District, and to approve the requested waiver.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tell your kids they cannot put their stuff anywhere besides that porch. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next six-thirty hearing. Uh, this is to hear the appeal of Erica Winchester, two forty, Barbara Ave, Worcester, Mass, oh one six oh six, for variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section seven EB, to allow for a twelve-foot sign, twelve square foot sign to announce a professional or home occupation greater than the allowed three square feet in area upon property located at six eighty-nine Main Street in the Residence B two zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty-two, Plot one, one four, zero, zero, zero. Thank you. Have a seat.
Thank you. Good evening.
Can you state your name for the record, please, and let us?
Certainly.
Know a little more about what you'd like to do.
Absolutely. So, my name's Erica Winchester. I'm with a representative of Ready to Run Graphics and Signs. Like you said, we're in Worcester. Um, our customer is here tonight, Joseph Lovett, and he is the tenant and owner of the business, uh, at six eighty-nine Main Street. Um, so, kind of what we're looking for is the, um, increase in square footage for the signage on, um, on the building structure. Uh, and the thought behind it is that a three-square-foot sign on the building is not going to be very visible. The size of the lettering would, would not be, um, would not be in the intent of the, uh, of our, of our industry. We usually say you need to have at least an inch of lettering height, height to every ten feet that you're away from the sign. Um, in a three-square-foot sign, which would be one foot by three foot, would be quite, quite small, um, for that, for that location. Um, so that is, that's kind of, that's where, where we're at, is that we're just, the ask is to have a, um, larger square footage of signage.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. O'Neil? Further information?
No, they also had, um, a waiver request, uh, which we can review after. Um, and there was one abutter, um, that emailed their comments, and that was presented to you and, and added.
Yes.
To the application.
And I can address that.
If you, if you had him.
Thank you. Did you want to address that before we get into questions?
Sure. Um, thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.
We're overjoyed to open up our sixteenth family-owned and operated Liberty Tax Franchise office. We've been doing business for about eighteen years in central Mass. Um, I transitioned out of the military into law enforcement, and three years ago relocated in Mass. So, this, this whole setup is fairly new to me, um, in terms of, uh, you know, coming in front of a, a council and so forth. And I think, you know, harkening back to my days in a courtroom, just looking at some of the, some of the facts, this, this property was rezoned under a commercial variance at one point, um, and I think it was an oversight of the landlord slash owner, Tom Perschet, to, uh, attach the signage variance as well. If I'm understanding the, the, the language behind the, um, B two and the three square feet, that's because it's, that would be as if it were a residence. But this isn't a residence truly because it has a commercial variance, therefore it is a commercial property. So, I just want to keep the signage in line with that. Um, part of the email that was written, um, wasn't, didn't seem like it was so objected in terms of square footage, although they cited that as, as, uh, something to consider. It was the lighting, and we're not here to look like a train wreck or diminish the brand of what we represent. We want high-end too. So, if that's a, you know, a backless channel letter sign that only projects outward, cool with that. If it's downlighting on a, on a non-lit sign box, that's cheaper for me, I'm cool with that too. Um, I want to be cognizant of the two individuals that live directly above us. Uh, furthermore, as a seasonal tax office, uh, we're only there from January five to April fifteen, then one day a week. So, this, this sign might be lit two hundred days, or a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty days a year. So, you know, it's, and, and it's this part of the year where it's dark at four-thirty, and we need people to be able to see us so that they, they know we're there. So, um, you know, we, we are amicable to anything. We just had to start somewhere to get in front of you guys, to get the variance conversation rolling. Um, but whatever we can come up with that, that makes everybody happy in terms of the citizenry and your constituents, we're flexible. We, you know, we just had to start somewhere.
And to speak on to this sign, that the sign that we did, um, propose and have a design for is a light box that would have a timer. It would, it would be able, we would be able to, um, set it to when, you know, the, the sign, um, would be able to be, say, you say that needs to be off at nine o'clock. It could be off at nine o'clock. It, it would be set with a timer.
Okay. All right. Peter, questions, comments?
Yeah, so I think, um, you nailed your, your best argument, really, which is that it was, um, a variance was given to allow a business there, and that the, the, um, provision of the bylaw that, that is at issue here would relate to if you had a sign on a home. And obviously, this is sort of different, and I think, um, that earlier variance sort of justifies, um, allowing something different here. However, I do think that part of that is being sensitive to the context, to the fact that this is kind of a unique, um, situation along that stretch. Um, and bearing in mind the, the comments from the public on this that are in the record, I would, I would much rather, or I'd be much more inclined to support an externally illuminated or frontlit sign along the lines as suggested, or a wall mount, uh, wall-mounted sign or projected sign, blade-hanging sign, whatever, um, of the size that you propose, um, than a, than a light box sign in that particular location because I think we do need to be sensitive to the context. So, again, I, again, these issues, it's another repeat issue from earlier tonight. I don't know that we can, um, consider that under this application because it's not what was proposed. Um, so, yeah, so I think, um, I don't know what the, I, it'll be interested to hear what others on the board think, but that would be my preferred way forward, and so I don't know if the best, what the best procedure would be to either withdraw and reapply, um, you know, with a new, with a new application, and I'd be inclined.
That would be very difficult, given the number of times you convene and the timing aligning with tax season. And then for subsequent approval, permitting, installation, uh, I'm going to lose half a tax season.
So, it would be for the, I guess, is it too late for next month, I guess?
Yep, that already went out.
Right.
Yep, so that, I mean, people don't see us, they don't know us. We're there.
Yeah.
Pretty good hit.
It's tricky.
You know, in terms of being a small business, it's a hit that I don't know if I can necessarily take, so.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Right, so, so, I mean, really, the, the big issue of, of why we were, um, the variance, why the permit wasn't approved was because of the size. So, that was really what we are coming to speak on, is the size of the, of the sign. Um, it, it doesn't say anything in the bylaws as far as like whether it can be a light box or not.
That's actually a very good point.
Yeah, good point.
I think that's, um, the application was for variances to size. Um, could we, I don't see why we couldn't grant that but condition it on the fact that it's, um, frontlit or something instead, or it takes a different.
Why couldn't we put a condition on that?
That's what I'm saying.
Why would you think to?
Yeah, after, because the.
If there's no violation of, I mean, I guess, then we restrict the argument purely to size. Nobody's, I don't know.
I mean, we're allowed to put conditions on, um, variances, and it's not like we have to put those conditions ahead of time in the notices to the public, right? Like we come up with them on the spot.
Correct.
So, I don't see any reason why we couldn't grant a variance as to the size, but condition that it can't be, that it can't be backlit, it has to be frontlit.
Or play music or.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah, right. You have to, you know, plant an arbivide or something. I don't know. We do that all the time.
Yeah, we're, we're, so let's see what the other board members say, but I think we can find a way out.
Sure.
Ann?
So, I do think a twelve-foot illuminated sign would be really out of character for that stretch of Main Street. The closest illuminated sign you have is Central One, which is a good distance to the right if you're facing the property, and then I think the country shop or maybe, yeah. Anyway, there isn't very much of this on Main Street. I very much like the alternative of something other than a light box. I think that would help. Um, so, I guess I'm not completely opposed to having a sign there. Um, I think, I still think twelve feet is a really long sign. Um, when the previous owner or tenant was there and they just had their little sandwich sign outside, everybody notices that going by. I mean, if the loose letters were three or four inches high and you can still, your eye is drawn there. So, um, so I, I would be more in favor of something a little bit smaller and externally lit.
So, we went with the two feet by six feet option because that would make the letters approximately eighteen inches, and again, just keeping kind of the golden rule of sign-making. And our corporate branding standards have to be specifically linear, if that makes sense. Uh, you can't stack the logo.
Logo.
Yeah, and again, that, that's just big corporate nonsense.
Right. Right, so if it's any shorter than the six feet, so it's twelve square feet, the whole sign is, but the, if it's more than six feet long, less than six feet long, we won't be able to fit the lettering in of Liberty Tax, or, um, on, on Liberty Tax on the, um, sign.
Following the, the sort of golden rule, though.
Right.
But you, you, would it be possible to scale it down and just not follow the golden rule and have it be shorter?
Yes.
Yeah.
Kevin?
No, I don't have anything to add. Um, I think my point of view aligns very well with Peter's.
Okay. David?
I think that the uh the size of the sign, uh, for me is okay, albeit on the larger side for that neighborhood. Uh, the the lighting is the issue for me. A lit, a light box type, um, I think is really not not appropriate for your location. And uh I'm I'm interested in, you know, having a condition that applies other other lighting techniques.
Are you guys familiar with channel letter signs? Like, what a channel letter is?
No.
Okay, so just think of an electrical track, and it could be visible or hidden. The letters flush-mount to that, and it supplies um electricity to the individual lettering and logo. So it's almost like it's been laser-cut as a logo. They're very, very clean-looking. So in master-planned uh commercial uh projects that are like mini-malls, you know, your little strip mall, landlords will often require you to have channel letters versus light boxes, because there is kind of an association with, that's kind of cheap, that's kind of chintzy, you know? The reason we've we've done it, you know, is because we're a seasonal business, we want to keep those expenses down, so much so that, hey, it's the fastest, easiest way to get a sign up is a light box. Channel letter and just cost comparisons, and that's why we're willing to work with you guys. All in for a light box, I'm in at about eighteen hundred bucks. If I go channel letters, it's going to be closer to sixty-seven hundred dollars. That's significant, you know?
I think um, for me, I think the the reason that I'm sort of more in support of it is that it's you're not far from the Town Center zoning district, which does allow the kind of lighting that's described in the public comment, the externally illuminated frontlit signs. I wouldn't be opposed to something of that size that complied with the permitted signage guidelines for the Town Center zoning district. I don't know if that, if what you're describing is included in that, but if something that would comply with that.
Yeah, I could show a picture if it would help, otherwise we can.
I I'll leave it to the experts as to whether that complies with the the permitted signage guidelines. I think that the condition that I would put on it is that it complies with the permitted signage guidelines for the district.
I believe that Dean Park is a lit sign also, and Central One has a digital sign in front of their their buildings. And they're all within the R-two district also.
Yeah, Central One, though, is like a few hundred feet from the road. So I think it's I think it's a little bit different, but.
So, I I mean, welcome to town. We certainly want to support businesses, that's um, and and having a business in that building, which I think has had issues over many years as to what really was going to fit in there, um, works to everyone's benefit. I, the size, I have less of a concern with, but the technique that you're, I think, if, and I wish I had a better graphic of. I I'm more of like a visual, like, what's it really going to look like? And it's hard for me to really be able to tell based on what you've provided to us. I'm not loving the 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 lit box idea, frankly. The proposal in one of the abutters um letters regarding downward lighting, I understand why you'd want it to be lit and certainly want to call attention and allow people to see it before they turn in. But I'm less concerned about the size and more concerned about it being lit the wrong way.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's my comment.
You know, we could, we can build anything, whether it's a backlit sign or a channel letter sign. We also have these flush-mounted letters that get white LED light behind, so it just almost looks like it's a shadow, like, very clean, aesthetically pleasing, you know? And obviously, the downlit. So I guess if we're all on the same page, if we're referring to downlit, it would be a static image on, say, whatever composite material you use. And some ornamental porch lights, if you will, that just kind of hang over it and.
Exactly.
Decorative lamps.
Yeah.
Fully shielded decorative lamps, I think is the language that's used.
Okay, I'm okay with whatever.
In Comese's, in the center of town.
Right.
That building is all.
Right, country shop was an example, uh, it's a perfect example.
And I think that's in keeping with the neighborhood and with the his- I mean, the historic nature of the neighborhood and all those sorts of things.
Okay.
So let's hear from the public before we.
Let's hear from the public.
Okay, this is a public meeting. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? I see someone approaching. If you could state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Uh, Patricia McIsaac, six ninety Main Street, directly across the street.
Hello, neighbor.
Hi.
Hi, Patricia.
This is my husband, Andrew.
Hi, Andy McIsaac, six ninety Main Street.
Yeah, so um certainly welcome to the neighborhood, to Liberty Tax. We're always happy to have any commercial business. Uh, my biggest concern is our master bedroom is directly across the street, so even the littlest sign illuminates our house. Um, so our concern is restrictions on time. I love the idea of the downlit. I think it's it's more suitable to our antique neighborhood, those of us who are trying to hold on to our antique houses. And I guess my biggest thing is, you know, just time, like, the previous tenant unfortunately would forget to shut off the light, so we would have, like, blinking open all night um when he or she forgot to shut it off. So um, I need my beauty sleep, people. So those are our concerns. I mean, obviously, you know, we're happy to have any business in there. But if they could just be cognizant of being an antique home, we're not that far off of the street, they're not far off of the street. So it's like right there. So that's our only thoughts, unless you have any others?
No, just uh, I like the idea of the downward lighting, anything that can keep the lighting in in, you know, nature of the the neighborhood would be great. Um, I I think if it is going to be lit, that there does need to be an automatic timer as a stipulation, something that will shut the light off at at the appropriate time. My my question, because it's unclear, is the sign going to be mounted directly to the building facing out to the street?
That's what it looked like.
Okay, so it's not going to be perpendicular perpendicular?
Correct.
All right, um, and, you know, um, I guess that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To clarify, in tax season, nine to nine would be the latest we ever go. Out of tax season, like I said, it's one day a week, and those hours are modified usually like better than bankers' hours, like ten to five, if if we can actually get somebody to go in, if we need to go in, so, yeah.
Is there an official definition of tax season, like the dates?
No, and the reason for that is, uh, we do both personal and business taxes, if business deadlines are different. And we do have ongoing bookkeeping and payroll clients, so.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to think of if we were to add a condition that allowed it to be lit later, and we limited it to the relevant months.
Then I would request January five through April fifteen as the standard tax season, absent any, you know, global pandemics that, you know, give us the ability to file late and not get in trouble.
True.
Just think, a couple of years ago, that would have been a completely insane thing to say.
Absolutely.
And now it's a completely reasonable thing to say.
And lastly, we'll we'll be very sensitive. Uh, I don't know if you have a tax guy yet, but I'll give you my card.
She needs her beauty sleep in her taxes, so.
But honestly, if there's anything else of concern, you you know who to talk to, and we'll fix it, so.
Thank you for being so reasonable. I mean, I think it's fair, um, size seems fair. Litting, lighting conditions, I, we'll have to think about how we word this um in our decision. And then I think having the timer, um, I I just had lighting done on our house and there's a, an app. You know, it's it's easy, so we just have to figure out how to say this so that it sticks. So I'm going to ask an expert to think about wording.
I have ideas.
And there were, there was a waiver request.
Oh.
With, you know, dimensions of subject property boundaries. Location of all existing or proposed uses structures and buildings on the subject property, um, whatever.
Is that similar to the uh?
Yeah, like, location of all building entrances or exits, driveways, parking lots, and loading, which I think that is shown on one of them, but um, location of utility lines, connections with the property.
Again, less relevant, I think, if we're talking about a sign as opposed to.
Right, drainage calculations.
Okay.
Right, all right, so can I entertain a motion, please?
We have to close public hearing.
Oh, excuse me, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, motion?
All right, I'll take a crack at it. So I move to approve a variance under section seven E.B. to the zoning bylaw to allow for the twelve-square-foot sign to announce a professional or home occupation greater than the allowed three feet, uh, three square feet in area at six eighty-nine Main Street in the Residence B-two District. Conditioned that said sign, bear with me. That said sign um comply with the permitted signage guidelines for the Town Center zoning district, and any lighting on said sign be shut off no later than five P.M., except between January fifth and April fifteenth of each year, during which time the light may be on no later than nine P.M. And no earlier than.
I just.
Oh, go ahead.
I just don't know about the Town Center design guidelines. I would have to double-check that this matches the design.
Am I using the wrong?
Because I think that's what.
The permitted signage guidelines?
Mm-hmm.
So you're asking us to reference that?
Reference, because it's a def- a separate design, like, we don't have design guidelines in the regular zoning bylaws.
Okay, I thought I said permitted signage, permitted signage guidelines. Is that the wrong thing?
Yeah, I would just um.
You have design principles and guidelines.
We don't, yeah, the design guidelines would hopefully be for Town Center, so I think just through the section of the zoning bylaw that they requested.
I'm confused. I was saying I I thought I would be in favor of allowing the lighting if it complied with the the Town Center guidelines, even though it's not in the Town Center District. I'm just trying to now locate. Where the dosar.
Hold tight, we just have to get this right.
Is that section seven U?
Correct.
And the design standards and guidelines in subsection seven?
And that's what I'm saying is, I don't know, I would have to read through that to see if this illuminated sign complied with those.
Oh, no, so like, what I'm saying is, my proposal is to just require, we grant relief as to the size.
Okay.
And the condition is, whatever it looks like, it has to comply with the Town Center design guidelines.
Okay.
And then, because all that's all that's lawfully before us is the is the size.
I'm tracking.
And then we can condition it however we want to condition it.
I was understanding that correctly.
Okay.
Retake, start over.
Well, no.
You want me to say that? I can say that all the time.
If you could, I just need to record, we need to do that.
Yeah, no, that's fair enough, all right, let me let me reboot. Okay, I move to approve um a variance under section seven E.B. to allow for a twelve-square-foot sign to announce a professional or home occupation greater than the allowed thr- three square feet in area at six eighty-nine Main Street in the Residence B-two District. Conditioned that said sign must comply with the permitted permitted signage guidelines for that district or for the Town Center zoning district. That said sign be lit no later than five P.M. and no earlier than nine A.M., except between January fifth and April fifteenth, during which time the sign may be lit no later than nine P.M. and grant the requested waivers. Did I cover it?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Measure twice, cut once, right?
Right.
Right.
You got it. We do. So we give them the choice, I guess. You got the script there?
Right, so uh, we have, next hearing, um, I'm going to hand this over to Peter, as I need to recuse myself from this hearing, as does Ann, uh, which brings us down to a four-member board. Peter's going to explain what that means to the applicant.
Yes.
All right, so, um.
So that's covered.
That's there.
There's that. Got it. All right, our next six-thirty hearing, um, is a application for two variances at one hundred thirty High Street, requested by Michelle Cassis. Um, could the proponent come forward, take a seat? And tell us what you're looking for?
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Oh, and and first I should say, we only have four members present. That means one, one no vote, um, and your application would fail, as opposed to a situation where we have a a full board. We have a quorum, but we don't have the sort of maximum-sized board. So if you're concerned, um, that one no vote would be enough to sink your application, you could move, you could ask to continue to the next hearing, which is a a month from now, I'm not sure of the date. December eighteenth. And then you could have more than one no, um, and be okay.
Sure, well, I came here to ask for a continuance today.
Oh, well, so that works out nicely.
Because the documentation that was requested, I don't have that finalized yet.
Okay.
So I came here to ask for a continuance. I spoke, uh, this young lady is Louise?
Mm-hmm.
Is that who I spoke with on the phone today? Uh, and she asked me to be present because the board supposedly has some questions for me. And I think I I have a general idea why, uh, so I can give you some information upfront. I had planned to put a shed in my backyard. And not intentionally at all, certainly not with any malicious intent, I had encroached on my neighbor's property. And uh, but that has been removed. As of today, there is no encroachment on the property.
The shed has been removed?
The shed was not put up.
Oh, it's not put up.
Just a slab was put down, a, not even a slab, a um, ground, you know, crushed stone foundation kind of thing was put down for the shed to go on it. That that was encroached on my on my neighbor's property, certainly not intentional. And uh, the property was up for sale, they had done a survey. Uh, I guess the survey that they did showed that I encroached on on onto that property. So as of this morning, uh, that encroachment has been removed, and uh, there should be no issue there.
The crushed stone pad has been removed?
Uh, the the portion that was encroaching on the property was a small portion of of that, maybe three feet deep, two feet deep.
Okay. So it's no longer over the line?
Correct.
Okay, but the rest of it remains?
Yes, because I still intend to continue with my application. I still intend to, you know, I came here to ask for a continuance, I still intend to continue with my application uh for 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 to build a shed.
So I think, I wonder procedurally, is that a different request now that the situation has changed?
My request is today just to to to, for a continuance, simple.
Yeah, the request too was just to construct a shed in the front yard, um, along North Street. He has two front yards, and then um, he didn't propose, he didn't provide a setback to the property line. Um, so that was the second variance. On or just off the property line, so that would be the conversation.
So to clarify, so the the portion that encroached is gone, the remainder is still there, you still want to build a shed in that location?
Correct.
And so you're requesting a variance for the fact that it's so close to the line?
Correct, because as I, as I found out, I I do have two front yard, two front yards.
Yeah, which changes the setbacks.
Correct.
Well, yeah, and it's not allowed in the front yard technically, so that was why there was two variances.
Right.
But.
So we're, the encroachment is alleviated, so what's still technically before us, the request to build?
In the front yard.
In the front yard and in the setback.
And then the setback, yeah.
Okay. All right. So.
Patty here, so I have any questions?
And so if you want to continue on that, then I don't know that we should do any more if folks are okay with a continuance.
Yeah, if that's the case, we should just continue.
Right, there's no sense sort of in hearing the merits, I guess.
Right.
You're.
Right.
Sorry.
No, please.
Getting a plot plan?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, getting a survey done and a plot plan.
And it.
And that establishes exact location of the of the shed in relations to the, to the uh property line.
But to be clear, the the encroachment was removed.
Yes.
Pursuant to the plot plan from the the current, in other words.
From the neighbor's plot plan.
The neighbors are all set, is the question, I guess, I'm asking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, I mean.
If you are interested, I I took a couple of pictures of what it was.
Yeah.
I can show it to you.
Building inspector, have a comment?
Yeah, so um, Patty Shan, Building Inspector, um, so when the application was was submitted, um, we didn't have a proposed certified plot plan, which of course is very important, because we did not know what the request was going to be for how close to the side lot line or to the front lot line. And so we had to advertise a little bit generically to just say relief from that section of the bylaw was requested. But it just goes. But it just goes to show the importance of the proposed certified plot plan in this case that we needed to review. And then, of course, all of this kind of came to light causing it to be delayed.
Right.
So I wasn't aware that the encroachment was taken off. I just observed a slab that was put in place and of course the applicant stopped constructing the shed once he was made aware that a zoning violation occurred.
When you say slab, are you talking concrete slab or gravel slab as indicated?
Gravel. Gravel, gravel.
You're indicating gravel, but Patty, what are you indicating?
Right, we may have a little bit different interpretation what is gravel, but it appeared to be a concrete slab that was put in place to prepare for the construction of the shed.
Okay.
So if you want me to elaborate, I can?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's crushed stone with dust, it is no poured concrete at all.
Okay. I mean, our... Not wet concrete, in other words?
No.
Okay, aggregate?
Correct.
Okay.
That I had delivered from that place on Main Street, Northboro.
Okay. So I think if the encroachment is gone, I think that's helpful, but I don't know that we can consider the application without knowing exactly where you're proposing to now put it. And so I think that would sort of justify a continuance.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's on the building department, right, for any work that's been constructed?
To make sure that it's removed.
Previous to this moment, that it's in compliance with whatever the building department wants and then we're essentially voting for continuance. I mean, we're not voting or discussing on anything else, we don't even have a certified plot plan to know where the structure is.
Right.
Where the proposed location of the structure is.
Or how big it is.
Or how big it is, all these things. Okay. Okay. So I guess, do we vote on a continuance then? Is that... We don't close the hearing, right?
Oh, no, we don't close the public hearing.
Oh, do we have public comment? Even if you continue?
Do we take it on this part? I guess we might as well take public comment.
Or keep it open for next meeting.
Well, without closing it.
Right.
Yeah. If anyone, I suppose it's worth hearing anything anyone has come to say this evening.
Hi. Thank you for hearing me out, thank you, Mr. County.
Could you say your name and your address for the record?
My name is David Garraway. I actually live in Northbrook Field, but I'm representing the client that, a client of mine that is the abutter of this gentleman, we live at, they live at 132 High Street. I actually have an official survey, if I could pass that out, would you guys like to have that?
I think we have it in the record.
Does everybody have a copy of it? Yeah, that's the one.
It's Jarvis Stand Survey Mortgage Inspection.
Jarvis, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Would it be okay to sit down here?
Public generally...
Public generally stands, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, thank you for having me. So, good evening, everybody. I wrote this letter. My name is David Garraway, I'm with a company called Property Central Realty. We help people buy and sell homes in the local community and I'm representing my client, the estate of John Lopato, as a seller's agent in the sale of their home located at 132 High Street, which is the neighbor of Mr. Cassis here. For the sake of saving time during the meeting, I did write this letter to kind of just breeze through it. So it was my pleasure and really exceeding my expectations that Mr. Cassis of 130 High Street has already taken upon himself to begin removing the known concrete encroachment that was over the property line. So the entire premise of what I'm about to share with you was with that goal in mind of removing the encroachment and then seeing what you had to say on giving the variance. So 132 High Street was supposed to close on November 13th of this year. About a week prior to closing, the buyer's agent sent me a photo of a concrete slab that was poured on my client's property and then all of a sudden, you know, it's caused a little bit of stress and anxiety. It does pose many issues, but specifically affects our contract in which is standard purchase and sales language, that property that we're selling will be conveyed free of any liens or encumbrances. And this, up until maybe a few hours ago, was in fact an encumbrance. I did question whether or not the concrete slab was even on the property, not just on the line, which brought to my attention many other issues and the subsequent delay that has caused not only my client, the subsequent delay that has caused not only my clients but everybody involved's issues. It turns out that Mr. Cassis actually has two front yards, which was kind of interesting, High Street and North Street. And that from doing my own kind of due diligence, I learned that building a shed on your front yard would require a variance from the zoning board. It's my understanding that no variance has been granted to this day. Also, building a shed within 10 feet of a property line requires variance as well. And from the previous conversation, we could tell that there's been no variance, but there has been construction started. Also, I've not been able to find any bylaw that allows the building of a structure on land that's not your own or without permission from the abutter and certainly not without zoning board involvement. The delay in our closing due to these violations has caused much pain and suffering, not only to our client but to everybody involved. 132 High Street is my client's property, it's vacant, it has carrying costs, especially now with electric heat, not limited to just that, but property taxes, yard maintenance, I mean, all the cost of homeownership, right? Our client has had to spend excess funds brought on by the encroachment. Our company has also been financially impacted by the delay. We don't get paid unless it closes. There have been further costs associated, including both buyer and seller having to pay for an instrument survey to find out whether or not it's even an encroachment. And since the nature of the backyard privacy has now changed, we had to renegotiate with the buyer and give them a pretty hefty closing cost credit because they don't want a big shed in their backyard. It's not theirs. It's my understanding that Mr. Cassis is looking for a continuation to provide documents in order to build a shed. I've presented to you today facts and the negative effects of those facts. Continuing this matter will only further delay the pain and suffering, will only continue to add on to the pain and suffering that our clients are having. If there is no encroachment anymore, as Mr. Cassis states, it's been removed, I think it would be in my client's best interest to vote on the matter today rather than continuing. Lastly, I want to end by saying that our closing date, again, was supposed to be November 13th. According to the contract language that we have in the purchase and sales agreement, the seller has an automatic 30 days to extend their closing to deal with issues like clause-on-title encumbrances, those types of things. After that date, there will be no more obligation on the buyer to stay in contract. So if this gets continued and we continue to have this issue, the buyer can just walk. We're back to square one in the middle of the winter with a house that's going to be hard to sell and further carrying costs. Not to mention the tragedy behind the death of the family member that they're just looking to get some closure on this. So I would say that if there really is no more encroachment, that we would like an answer today.
Can I clarify, if there's no more encroachment, are you able to move forward with the transaction?
I can speak on the seller's behalf, yeah, I think that would be okay with us, but I, you know, there's two parties that would have to agree to that.
I mean, to the extent that there's, if there's no longer an encumbrance on title, I think the question of whether it's okay to have a shed close to your, close to the property line?
Which is a whole nother issue, yeah.
Is a separate issue, essentially.
It's a separate issue, yeah.
And that process, I think, could continue on as it normally would.
Yeah, I mean, I hope, I've spoken to Mr. Cassis twice prior to this. I think he's a very nice man, we've been very cordial with one another trying to work these things out. And I think if he can go through the proper channels and do any appropriate paperwork to get a variance, I hope he does get a shed. But I don't think that you can just put one anywhere and begin building without doing that.
All right, and to be clear, I think if the request before us was to build a shed partially on the neighbor's lot, I would be inclined to deny it because that would be illegal.
Right.
So, but I don't think that's before us anymore.
Well, I think what's before you now is kind of no different than, there was one just earlier today, you know, would we rather have it close to the property line or close to the house? I think at that point where it's no longer an encroachment, it's very similar to why would we just stick it as close to the property line as possible when there's somewhere else to place it?
I think the issue is we don't know where the proposed location is because we don't have a plot plan showing where it's proposed to be.
Sure.
And if the encroachment is gone...
Right, well, I think by the fact that Mr. Cassis has partially removed the encroachment, I think the intent would be to continue to build there.
And I'm applying a variance for that.
Right.
So, and when you came to my property and looked at it, David...
Through the chair, please, we don't, yeah, the way the rules operate.
Okay.
You can talk to us and he can talk to us, but you're not supposed to...
And when the gentleman came to my house and looked at it, he told me, his words to me, is this is the exact location where the shed should be. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I'm applying for a variance for it, to put it where, in the location where I want it, and I'll explain in that, in that why I wanted to put it there.
So I don't think, I could not support it based on a handwritten plot plan, which is what I currently have from you in the record.
Cannot support the application right now as it is?
I would want to see a measured drawing.
Correct.
Not like what I have, which is a red bic pen on a printout. So I would want to see, before I would be prepared to vote for it, I'd want to see exactly where it's supposed to be according to a surveyor.
Correct.
So I wouldn't be prepared to vote for it on the record in front of me without knowing where exactly...
Correct.
You're going to put it. And I certainly wouldn't be prepared to support it if encroached on somebody else's property. I'd be interested to hear, we should hear from the rest of the, I'm sorry, sir, is that the end of your comment?
Yeah, I mean, just, I know I can't talk to him directly, but have a little bit of a rebuttal. I did visit his house and I did say, I could see why you would put the shed there. That was before reading the bylaws and coming to this meeting.
And having a measured plan?
Having a measured plan, yeah.
Sure, okay, well, that's helpful.
That's all, that's all I have.
Is there any other comment from the audience?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other comment from the board? We should go around.
I mean, I don't think we have much further to discuss. We need a certified plot plan to be able, for, at least for me, to be able to vote. I'd feel most comfortable with a certified plot plan. It sounds like going through the building department to either confirm or correct what's been built over the property line should happen, whether that happens outside of this board and in this meeting. But I think the abutters and Patty sitting here should go through those channels to make sure that's happened. And I don't see why, as you asked a question earlier, why that should hold up closing at that point, if that's been remediated and fixed. And then we wait next month to see where the shed location comes in and we vote then on accepting or denying the request.
Right. David?
Yeah, I agree. I think the, I don't think we have enough information to continue the applicant's hearing, so we need to continue it to next meeting. I think the abutter situation is essentially resolved as far as the sale needs to go through. Any particular purchaser or seller of property is always going to have the risk, you could say, of the neighbor doing something at some time with their property. So I think, I think your, sir, your client, they're, they should be good to go, in my opinion. So I'm in favor of a continuance.
Thank you, Tim.
So many questions, really. The, you know, the size of the shed, obviously, this was submitted under a Residence B1, I believe, and the assessor's database shows this property as a rural A.
Oh.
Which would be a greater, you know, 50-foot front requirement versus a 30.
Interesting.
So I think that's the case, Louise, from what I saw, but...
I'm sorry, can you please elaborate? I'm not following. What are you, what are you...
I see what you're saying.
The neighborhood zone in Shrewsbury, I believe, according to the assessor's database, is a rural A, not a Residence B1.
And I see now that the submitted plan is from 2007, so it's possible that...
I'm looking at the GIS map right now and it says Residence B1, it is right on the line?
Okay.
A rural A, Res A is right next door.
So just curious, that's another question I had, you know, hardship, the topography, the condition of the water is concerning when the application coming off North Street onto the property. So...
Oh, yeah.
And then, you know, of course, the question is, does it substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw? So many questions remain.
Right.
So what are those questions? Then I make sure I answer them for you next time around. What is the difference between B1 and A? Could you please elaborate?
Since you have...
I can do my own research, I guess.
Since you have two fronts essentially with High Street and North Street.
Right.
The setback requiring for the front yard is 50 feet for rural A and 30 feet for Residence B1. So you're, if in fact it's rural A, you're asking for greater relief because the front yard is essentially not allowed at all.
Right.
Okay. Can I ask a question on that? I mean, you, Town of Shrewsbury permitted me, permitted me to build a house with a front yard and a backyard back in 2007. Now, all of a sudden, I find out I have two front yards, I have a permit for a home, every home has a front yard and a backyard.
Oh, sir, first of all, that, what was, what you were permitted to build back then is not before us and it is just the bylaw, that when you have a front yard that's on one street and a backyard that's on one street, you comply with the front yard setbacks for both. It's not, there's no surprise there, that's always been the rule as I understand it. So, you know, I apologize for this.
You guys are trying to clarify...
No, I know, and I sympathize with, you know, we do this every month, so we know these things and folks in the public don't always realize these things. And so I understand why it would come as a surprise, but it is the rule.
Okay.
So I think, I don't know that we have enough information to approve and I don't know that we have enough to deny. Oh, we have one more public comment?
I do have a comment. It's kind of a question, but...
Name an address, please, for the record, if you could.
My name is Beth Finton. I'm across the street from Michael at 129 High Street. And I guess in hearing all of this, and if I understood Michael correctly, his intent is to put the shed essentially where the foundation of it is now, although the obstruction or what is it called, has been removed.
Encroachment, right.
The encroachment has been removed. Essentially, if I understand correctly, he wants it there, which is within a foot of the neighbor's property line and, you know, doesn't meet any of the other setback requirements. And I guess I'm just curious if that fact, if that makes tonight being a decision-maker night any different.
That's actually a very fair point. To the applicant, is it true basically that you'd like it to be roughly in that spot?
It will not, roughly in that spot, but will not be on the property line within a foot. I don't want to give you numbers right now because I'm having my own survey done.
Right.
And give you exact numbers, but it will probably be me more like four or five feet away and I would be asking, I thought I was asking for five-foot variance, not for 50-foot variance.
Right. So I would say if it is in fact, well, I guess, I would say, if it's, if your intention is for it to be in roughly that spot and it looks like the relief you're asking for is essentially 50 feet, I don't know that if you move, if you rejiggered it a little bit in that area, whether I would support it.
Yeah, and I will check in with the assessor's department with what they have on their vision card, which is where I think you saw the rural A.
Correct.
But in the zoning GIS map, it does say Res B1, so the side yard setback, or, you know, yeah, side yard.
But I think to Mrs. Finton's point, whether it's 30 or 50, if this is roughly where the applicant intends for it to go, would we support it? And I think for me at least, the answer is no.
I still wouldn't feel comfortable voting without a certified plot plan, something on paper in our records instead of something verbal.
I agree. I would prefer to have the appropriate documents on hand for us to make the exact decision. I would also caution this applicant and any applicant against pursuing construction of a structure that will be in objection to a zoning bylaw prior to achieving or acquiring a variance. prior to achieving or acquiring a variance.
Sure. I, I have, I have not built anything since I realized that I needed the permit.
No, I understand, I understand. You're not the first to put the cart before the horse on this one, so.
Yeah, I, I, I thought a permit was not needed. That's what I.
No, I understand.
So that's why I started with it.
Yeah.
And then realized that I needed a permit and a variance.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
So I guess, in the interest of time, any, do you have a further remark?
Just one more question?
Sure.
What is, is there a hardship in that means that would be the reason why the shed would need to be positioned there?
And I'd pose that question to the applicant. Your, the hardship that you're asserting is that you have two front yards essentially, or?
Yeah, I mean, where, where else would I put my shed in my backyard? Usually shed would go in the corner of the yard. On the other, on the other side, I, I cannot put it. There's trees. On this side is where I need to put it. And I don't want to put it smack in the middle of the yard. There's water runoff from, you know, from high, from North Street onto my property, diverting water runoff into, into both properties, my property and my neighbor's property.
Right.
So that's why I want to put it in the corner.
Okay. Any more comment from the public, sir? Name an address for the record?
My name is Bruce Sadler and I live on North Street, 87 North Street, which is right across from my driveway to the property. And I would like to know how big this storage shed is going to be? And is it going to be compatible with the, with the other construction?
Right.
Is it going to be an ISO?
Now to the applicant, do you have a sense of the dimensions?
Yeah, it would be about 12 by 14. And it will not be a high pitched roof. It will be a low pitched roof because there's trees there.
What kind of a low?
I can't give you exact dimensions. I'll, I'll have those with me on the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, so if there's no more public comment, do I have a, a motion to close the public hearing? Or do we want to consider a motion for a continuance?
I would vote for a continuance.
I would also vote for a continuance.
Tim?
Yes, I would vote for a continuance as well.
Okay.
Just to get some real dimensions on this.
Okay. And is the, I guess it's the same rule, probably one no is a no and then, yeah. All right. So, well, first, well, someone has to make the motion, I guess.
Yeah, let's give this a go. I propose a continuance for two variances, the section seven, table two, to construct a shed in the front yard along North Street at the address of 130 High Street in the resident B1 district.
I think you have to do it to a date certain, so what?
December 18th.
To the next meeting, which is December 18th, 2023.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so moved. So we'll see you on December 18th.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have no new business, so that's the end of our 6:30 hearings and the end of the hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Good night.